Twenty twenty-four, one thirty P. M. Meeting, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we can establish that a quorum is present, which there is, and that's item number one. Item number two is review and take any action related to the minutes of the regular meeting held Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four. Everyone had time to look over and move approval? Move for approval?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, if you oppose. There being none. Item number three, ZB A twenty-four dash two-one, thirty-six, thirty-four, Silver Spur Drive, single member district number six, Larry Miller, request for approval of a variance from section five oh one point A of the zoning ordinance to allow for a twenty-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required twenty-five feet. Mr. Austin Reed.
Thank you. Austin Reed, planner. This request comes to you out of the Bonham neighborhood. We are in District Six, Larry Miller's district, and this is RS One zoning. What we have, like he said, is a request for a twenty-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required twenty-five feet. This is a newer housing development, if you couldn't tell. Silver Spur has since built out, and there's about eight or nine houses that have been built out as well. We did mail out twenty-six notices, did not receive any in opposition, but the land developer that owned some of these surrounding lots sent in his support.
And the developer owns all that were sent out?
Yes, those ten responses were from one developer.
Okay.
So the foundation for the structure's already been poured. It's just the garage portion that juts about five feet into that front setback. Once he learned of this, he came to the city, he stopped development, and decided to ask for variance. We went out and measured some of the other houses up and down Silver Spur, and they do seem to follow that twenty-five-foot setback, but ultimately, we weren't able to find the special circumstances that would allow us to recommend approval. So I've included the floor plan and the site plan, if they help. I know it's probably a little bit hard to see. With that, we are recommending denial, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, Mr. Reed, any questions?
I have a question when it comes to that. So I know out there, the HOA requires approval.
Mm-hmm.
Has the HOA approved this?
That's not something we've checked on. It's not something we typically ask for. Advocate might be able to answer that question.
Is the applicant here?
I believe so.
So the drawing on the right, it says twenty-five-foot building setback, but that's not accurate, I guess, is the thing?
Correct. That was their approved site plan at twenty-five feet. The plat as well does indicate a twenty-five-foot building setback.
So it's just mis-poured?
There's not anything in the special circumstances for oops? I guess not.
Not that I'm aware of.
We wouldn't be here, would we?
No.
I don't even know how to spell oops. Anyway, it's like trying to spell ZB A. Go ahead, sorry. Any more questions? Y'all, the city staff, y'all worked together with the applicant to try to work things out and...
We've had a couple conversations, yeah.
Nothing came to... Okay. I guess, I guess we'll let you go, and if they're through with questions from Mr. Reed, and we'll ask for public, I'll ask for, open it up for public comment.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. State your name, and let's get it on.
Darrell Calder, I'm the owner of the property and the building.
Hi, Darrell.
The confusion came with the, where the measurement started. We were measuring from the curb line. After visiting my brother, he's the G C on the job, he visited with someone at the city, I'm not sure who he talked to, but we were measuring from the curb line and not the property line, is where the five-foot adjustment came into play. To my knowledge, there's not an HOA at this location. I think there's some miscommunication with the address on why they thought there was an HOA, but to my knowledge, there's not an HOA for us to visit with. Again, it was just a misunderstanding with the curb line versus the property line. When we were looking at the drawings, it's got the curve. We thought that curve was the curb line, not the property line, because of the side, the way the line curved. So that's where our confusion was.
Okay.
And then, really quick, just addressing the HOA. So my name is Brittany Davis. I work with the developer and...
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. You need to state your name.
Brittany Davis.
Okay.
And I think I'm Henry Miller District. Anyway, the, with the HOA, so I do work with the developer and quite a few of the builders in the neighborhood. There are deed restrictions, there is not an HOA. I've talked to multiple other people that kind of heard about the situation at hand, and there is a lot of confusion between Enclave Street in Bentwood and The Enclave at Twin Oaks, because somebody at the city had told the applicant to call Kevin Collins and deal with the HOA, and they're two very different things. This is in Southland, and then Enclave Road is in Bentwood. And as we all know, there were some issues on Riviera, right behind Enclave, in regards to setbacks and whatnot. But this is a different development. I've spoken with the developer, actually, one of the developers is here, and they understand that it was a, you know, misunderstanding, reading the plat, and we're in full support.
Okay, thank you.
Clip to Calder, D N A Services two-point-oh, owner and operator. Where I messed up, or where it kind of got me, was on the S K G paperwork, it shows the ten-foot adhesment and the twenty-five-foot building line. Okay, well, there's another five-foot adhesment before that that's not on that survey, and that's where me and my contractor, or my concrete guy missed. I did go down to talk to Debbie, and she told me to go about that. I messed up, I should've done more research, but that is where that five-foot is missing.
Who's Debbie?
She's the secretary up front.
Okay. So is there property plans here?
How do you go back to that one?
Can you go back?
If I touch it, I...
Yeah.
The previous one? The S K G?
I know, Ray. Put the microphone in front of me, if you turn around and start talking. It's hard on me.
Yes, not up there. Okay, well, on the S K G platform, and I turned it in with you, I don't know why it's not on there, but it shows, you can see there, where it just shows twenty-five feet, or ten feet, twenty-five feet, and there's no other adhesment shown on there to state that there is an actual second adhesment. I mean, and I don't even know what it's called.
Is this our first property?
I always forget to do that.
Yes, this is...
Is this your first property to build in the subdivision?
Yes, it's our first property, period.
And then, right after that, the road does kind of, so, right after that, the road does kind of curve, so having it five foot forward, I really don't think aesthetically is going to, you know, jot the eye or do anything unusual by any means.
Okay.
And as soon as we were told that we, as you can tell, we stopped as soon as we, we had all the green tags up to that point, and they showed up right as we were starting to frame, they said, hey, you're five foot off. We haven't done anything since then, so. So it's been sitting for about a month.
Well, my friends, I've been in the construction business a long time, I've made this mistake myself over the years, when I start now.
So since the pad has already been poured, is there any way to adjust, and I, and just by looking at it and kind of reading, just by looking and reading, on where you've already laid the entire form, the path, everything, the five feet?
We really, I'm sorry to interrupt, we really need to be doing all the conversation through public comment if we can. Not you.
Oh. And usually, it's probably me that gets in trouble.
Thank you, Brandon. That was my job.
Is there any way, since it's five feet? Is there...
We could shrink the garage, but then you wouldn't be able to get a car in there. I mean, that's the only thing that's sticking out, as you can see, the front door actually goes in a little, so the front baby, the front window right there is a diner. And then, you've got this, uh...
Can you go back to the floor?
Can we go back to the floor plan?
Thank you.
Now, see, we got, most of us, the garage is sticking out, and then on the dining room is to the left.
Five feet of the garage, roughly, you know, right there.
Yes, sir. And...
What's, what's the depth of the garage?
The...
This one number right here, okay.
I can't even remember, sir.
What about, uh...
You can zoom, Austin.
Oh, look at there. Twenty-three point, three or eight, I can't tell.
We took five feet off that, that'd be eighteen.
There's also that, that curve right before the actual, the wall.
I'm sorry, and I will tell you, I am deaf.
There's a curb, like a tire stop, so there's like a three-foot tire stop there, and even with trying to get rid of that and make it to where they could bump it all the way up, cars are seventeen to eighteen feet long, so it kind of, I mean, you wouldn't be able to close the door. Because that was one of the ideas that we were trying to come up with, just in case.
What about a side entry?
Uh, it's, it's...
I think the property line and the lot, I don't think they, the way that's done the lot wouldn't allow it to come through.
Scratch that.
Yeah, very.
What about, let's see, you already have, it's already poured, huh?
Yes, sir, and the plumbing and electrical, that, that was the biggest issue, is, I mean, we couldn't move everything back if the utility, water, and all that wasn't right behind the garage door. All that would have to be completely relocated to do that.
To take this, this part and pull it back?
Right, if we pulled it back.
What would be in the way?
The utility, the water, the, so the utility rooms, we got the water and electrical, or not the electrical, but the water for the utility washer dryer and the hot water heater, all that's coming up in those positions right there.
Where's your, where's your water heater plumbing coming up at that back wall there?
Yes, sir, right there.
Is this the dryer? So there's not going to be any plumbing in the dryer, right?
The wash machine, correct, yes.
And washer's here, so you, if you flip the dryer back and left the washer, and just wiggle around a little bit, you don't think you'd get five feet out of that?
Not five foot. We were looking at it, it looked like we gave it about three.
Uh, you've got, let's see, bring the zoom down a second. This, this is a plumbing wall there, that's a no-go. Closet, little squeeze right there. You got plenty of room in your living dining to go back, that's for sure.
Yes, sir.
That, that cased opening can move? That door, is that a two-eight?
Yes.
And this is how much here? Six? I didn't, are you getting old? I can't see even that last one. Did you, who drew this?
Yvonne Bell.
Did you talk to Yvonne about it?
I did, and she's working on some suggestions, but she said nothing would be easy, but everything's doable for the price.
Well, that's kind of what I had to do when I got caught one time, you know, oops.
Yeah, that's, she did, she said, she's got the plans, and she's reviewing them, she just couldn't get it to me before today's meeting.
Oh, I see.
Because she's got other jobs, but she said, it's doable as long as I'm willing to spend the money. The problem is, it's very tight.
I understand.
I mean, you've been in it, so.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, the, I didn't have a lot of room for this kind of a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I ask the applicants a question?
Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Aaron Vonoy, Director of Plan Development Services. I know you're stopped right now, but what is your timeline? How, how much is this affecting your timeline?
It's a construction loan, so it's all based on that. So I've got, it was a, yeah, thirty days delayed already, plus the weather was, which that, we kind of figured, so.
Right.
Two and a half, thirty.
The reason I...
I've got about sixty-five, seventy days before I start paying interest on...
So the reason I, I ask, the one solution that staff have thought about is, because the set, front yard setback is set by zoning ordinance, not by the subdivision, not by the plat, it is set by the zoning ordinance. The only way to change that is to do some type of rezoning, potentially a planned development that would allow that front yard setback to be a difference than the twenty-five, than the standard twenty-five foot. Now, that means you're dealing with multiple owners, maybe a larger area, because we don't like to do just one lot at a time. We would rather maybe look at that block, but then that's also discussion with the developer. Now, I know that is a longer process, and that's, that's my concern, is that I know everything, time is dollars, we understand that, so. But if we're not able to qualify for a, a variance, is there another option out there?
Okay.
And so I, I think I just want to propose that as...
Thank you.
That could be the, the, the solution, while it's a longer, it takes more time to go to Planning Commission, it takes time to get in front of City Council. We can try to fast-track those as possible, as, as fast as we can without, you know, we have to meet our state deadlines on certain things, but that might be a solution. But it, it involves more than probably just them, so I just want to make that as a, as a potential solution.
How long do you think the process would be?
The challenge is, today's July the first.
Correct.
Planning Commission is July the fourteenth. I don't think we can get our state-required notice out for the July Planning Commission, which pushes it to August, and that's a long time.
It's six weeks.
So I think that's our, that's our challenge. We could get it to City Council after that fairly quickly, it's just, time is running very short.
Just out of curiosity, question. What does this, this is the only development in this little circle of lots, as far as I can tell. What does this do to the, to upcoming houses that may be built next door, next door, next door, next door, around this, this loop of property that's here? Is this one just going to stick out ten feet?
So it's, it's a five-foot adjustment that, that they are asking for, as far as the applicant goes. That current side of the street, there really is only one house to the left of that, and then, two or three lots down, there's one on the curve. Everything to the right is still vacant land. Most of what's across the street has been developed. So, you know, as you're approaching, you know, we're two, two homes away from where the curve actually comes in, and that's why I mentioned, I don't feel like a five-foot variance on this specific home is going to make much of a, you know, eyesore or anything like that, as far as when you're, when you're coming down the street. I really don't think that by the time landscaping and all of that's in, you're really going to see any impact at all.
Everything on that side is facing the other direction.
Okay, so if a, if a property was built next door, and the garage sticks out that much, is it going to be a hindrance for anyone to be able to see as they're backing out and somebody coming around, since it's on that curve?
No, you've got, so you still twenty foot, and I don't know, Eric left. Do you know the street width of hand?
I believe it's standard width of forty feet.
So you've got plenty of sightline visibility, plus the homes across the street on Silver Spur, those all have rear-entry garages, so it's really just this side of the street that has a front entry.
We have rules and regulations we have to go by as a zoning board, and I don't know if, did you, when you read them out, the hardship and all that kind of stuff. That's what we're dealing with also, as y'all are talking, we're thinking through stuff. Now, which one of the, you're, you're the outlined, uh...
The red.
Red. Where the, what's the green star?
That's the rest of what he owns.
Well, that's what the developer, West Texas Land Guys, currently owns.
Now, the very end one down there, looks like it has a lot of width to it. I did, I did glance, summary glance at it, and they went twenty-five feet on that end one down there, they're, they're going to have a hard time getting a house on that particular lot.
On thirty-six fifty?
Or thirty-six twenty-two.
The very, yeah.
Thirty-six twenty-two.
Is it thirty-six twenty-two you're talking about?
Yes.
Right or left?
Yes.
If you're looking at it, is it the one on the end of the left, or the one on the end of the right? So thirty-six twenty-two.
The odd-shaped lot.
Oh, yes.
Thirty-six twenty-two.
And I wasn't so sure about the next one, if it might have difficulties too at twenty-five feet, might not work better at twenty feet, I'm thinking about all through this.
I think thirty-six eighteen has a house there, if I'm not mistaken.
So, I think what, uh...
It does.
Mr. Vonoy's talking about, he might be able to help those other, especially that one lot down on the end.
By adjusting?
Yeah, at a twenty foot.
Yes, sir. And, yes, sir.
State your name, please.
Eric Von Rosenberg, West Texas Land Guys. So, I just want to say, we're, we're in favor of the variance, first of all. Secondly, based on what Aaron's suggesting, everything to the right of this house that's in question, the one immediately to the right, and the one after that, those are deep lots, so it's not going to get affected too much. As you go closer to canyon rim, because those lots are getting into an angle backing up to the lots that are on canyon rim, the twenty-foot, in fact, would probably help. The lot right there, thirty-six eighteen, has a double frontage on, or a double front setback, so a twenty-foot would definitely help. I don't know if it's possible, this would be discussion for Aaron, or a question for Aaron, but if you feel strongly that we could get that rezone for those lots right there, because everything else around it is already built, so it's not going to affect them. But if we were to get the twenty-foot off of a rezone, just for those lots that are left, going to the right, if we were able to do that, would we be able to just get the twenty-five on thirty-six, thirty-four, or the twenty-foot variance today on thirty-six, thirty-four, and then go through the process on the other ones moving forward? That, that would be my suggestion. But I did want to state, we're, we're, we're fine with it, especially because where it's located, as you make that turn, if that one house right there is five feet forward, as opposed to thirty-six, thirty-eight, you're making that turn right there, it's, you're not going to notice it. Right. It's going to be more of the houses that are headed towards canyon rim that you're going to notice it. But if we had that twenty-foot thereafter... It'd be uniform. Everything would be, everything would work out fine. And it would help thirty-six eighteen. Yeah, the problem we have doing, I would think, Brandon, correct me, is the, the guidelines this board has to use for hardship and all that kind of stuff, for what's one individual, this, we've got to work through that. Sure. Cost is one of them, but there's other things, but the, it sounds like what Mr. Vonoy talked about there might, might have to put this on, on the agenda in there with that, not, I don't know, but, thank you.
Yeah, so, just as a reminder, I mean, the hardship is one that's site-specific, not necessarily like how it's designed, or in this case, you know, a mistake, it's sympathetic as we are to that. You really need to make findings that are specific to this site, and why the topography or the size merit the hardship and the variance.
I'm glad you didn't read all of it, we've been here longer. Y'all, y'all get the gist of that, there's rules that we have to follow also, and, you know, we, we know gray areas and all that, and try to get wiggle room in there.
And Chairman, just, just as a clarification, the plan development would have to go to the Planning Commission, who has a say and a recommendation for or against to City Council, and it is City Council's ultimate decision on to allow that plan development. While I think city staff can analyze the area and make some recommendations, I don't want to answer for City Council when it's their decision, and I don't want them to go, walk away from here thinking, well, it's an automatic that they may get that.
Right. 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 It's fifty-fifty. Is there any, if we do the process replat, there's, there's not anything they can do to keep going on with the construction while we find out whether it would be approved or not?
I would say, currently, there's a, the hold on the property. It is a huge risk for them to do anymore. I mean, they're, they're going against something, and if they don't get it, now they've put more money into something they can't inhabit, and I would recommend against that.
Okay, there's our options, uh, pretty much. The redesign of the plan, y'all keep going. I'm just one vote here, and I'm not saying anything about the rest of the board, and I'm not calling for the vote yet, but you kind of got, you have the picture of what we're, hope you have a picture of what we're dealing with. There might be an out option by redesigning the plan, and, uh, I wish that was the option, y'all knew it was the option today, we could work on that. But I see, I see it can be redesigned, myself, so, y'all have any more comment? For closed public comment?
If we, like I said, I'm waiting on Yvonne to get back to me on the redesign. If she gets a redesign, what's the next step there? Can we just start process, or we have to resubmit drawings, or...
Sorry, we would just resubmit revised drawings, let it go through the review process. They, they're doing a great job of getting that done very quickly, and then it would, once they get that plan set approved, then they'd just go back to the field inspections.
You said it takes, July fourteenth is the next hearing? I don't think we can make that.
It's actually July fifteenth, it's, it's two Mondays from today in the state, since we have to have, I think, a fifteen-day notice, and I'm looking at Ray across the way just to make sure, she's nodding yes. So that's our challenge with that, and we only meet once a month.
Just hopefully she gets the plan done quicker, thirty at first. Hopefully, we can try to get a rezone, but, and, I mean, there we have, selling properties going to be closer to, and that may cause, you know, if I try to buy a couple where we have, where it's just, there's no room to put it out, and, you know, we may not be, but we'll do whatever we have to do.
Right. Well, you know, I understand, time is money, that's for sure. We're working on this one individual case then, and if you have any more to say, comment on, go ahead, if not, I'm going to ask some more public comment, and if there not being any, I'll close public comment.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there any, any more public comment? There being none, I'm going to close public comment. All right. Board, welcome to this nightmare. Oops. Do we know we don't have an oop on here?
Not a great one.
Uh-oh.
Any, the board, any comments?
So definitely, if, if, if it were a quicker way to do it and adjust the five-foot through the deed restriction, that would be super, but we're looking at, at least... Yeah, at least two months, by the time it goes to City Council twice and does all that. Next best would be the redesign of the footprint, and, you know, we're just kind of waiting for that right now. I don't see that, I don't feel like I can, or we can make a motion regarding changing it. And we've tried to do some things recently and other things, and it comes back, so the best thing would be to have it twenty-foot setback, so it allows for all of those that do not have a front yard.
So you're talking about replating the whole...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, but I'm just talking. So, this is commented, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're going to have to, yeah, we're going to have to vote on this particular case.
So let's say that they're going to move forward with trying to get the deed restrictions changed to twenty-foot. Meanwhile, during this process, if they can get something from their person that's drawing the plans, that they can adjust and move forward, how, they could go ahead and adjust with that, and this still would be in place for the twenty-foot setback, or what?
That is correct. So whichever remedy they come up with first, they're able to move forward with. If that remedy is a redesign, and that's a quicker option, they can go ahead and apply for the rezoning, to rezone that and change the setback, and those processes can be moving forward together. If the redesign ends up being a work for them and their client, and they decide, okay, we don't want to go through with the rezoning, and they're able to remedy it that way, they're able to do that as well.
But we still have to vote on this particular case.
Right, right. No one know that. No one know that.
Good question. I think what you did is give them some options.
Several options.
So on the deed restrictions too, are you saying that they would have to apply for that, or would this be something that we could move forward from this meeting stating that those properties need to be changed as far as the restrictions?
Well, usually we have the property owner apply, and in this case, if the property still to the right is owned by the West Texas Land Guys, they might have a joint application that would come to the city. And we'd be happy to sit down and work with them through that quickly to get that going, but I don't think this, we usually don't city initiate these in a neighborhood, usually.
Okay. Any more comments, more?
Just to add, kind of what Terry added.
There we go.
Leaving those two options available then with us as a third option, if everything falls through, if we were to not vote or table, a few months of interest expense is way better than putting up a home or halfway through and you're told no. You know, always speak to your lender, you know, you can always, they're in the business of leasing money, not owning real estate, so, you know, talk to your lender, pay your interest, you know, you lick your wounds and move on.
I do want to thank you guys for stopping, because that doesn't always happen, and we appreciate that, and that's a good way to prevent you from spending extra money.
So if we table it, is that going to...
Yes, one moment.
Go ahead. So if we tabled it, and then they did the application, and it went, would it really add that much more time to the process if it already got changed, and they wouldn't have to come back for a variance? But it would still leave it open for them to get approved for the variance? Without, how does...
If it matters at all, if y'all do table it, and they go through the process of the PD, yeah, I mean, you're going to have to go to Planning Commission first, and then two readings at City Council, because it's an ordinance, because it's a plan development. So, I mean, it probably won't be until October.
Oh, wow.
So if we were to approve it, would it speed that up any? In other words, it'll bounce to the Planning Commission next, right?
Well, if you're approving it without making the findings, then, I mean, that's problematic. But I don't think you can condition your approval today on them maybe getting a rezoning in a different case, because, I mean, that goes to Planning Commission, so y'all have no say in that.
I hate those horns of a dilemma. All right, I want to, board comment, reopen public comment?
Okay, okay. Always, thank you.
I thought she was going to have the pearl of wisdom that solved all this. Help, help, help. Okay, I'm going to then open board comment, back commentary back up, more discussion only. Do we want to make a motion? I think everything that I can think of being commented on, I don't think I will have any help with any of my comments. So...
I'd like to make a motion. I don't know, I've been sitting here trying to figure out a variance and how we can support it, and how we can make it work according to all these rules and restrictions, and I can't come up with one. So I will make a motion that we support staff's recommendation of denial.
Okay, there's a motion for denial. Do I hear, do I have a second? Is there a time limit I'm supposed to give? 10, 9, 8, 7, 6. We're not having a second there, so we'll open back up for more discussion.
Do you have the list on, that we can look at for the reasoning?
I have a presentation to go up, and I got a cheat sheet for you all.
Okay.
I just have a board if you want me to.
Is it, is it on here?
Well, that's fine. I mean, there's multiple slides. This is, this is a little off. Okay.
Thank you.
There's one back.
I just don't see...
I just don't want to put us in a situation where this is the other 10 or 12 lots that have to be done individually each and every single time.
Yeah, so, this is like an abbreviated version of what's in the ordinance. These six criteria, you have to find that each and every one of these are met in order to approve the variance.
Right.
So, this is just meant to be kind of a cheat sheet, but this is right out of the ordinance.
And can you, why do we need the ZBA then? Why can't y'all just go over this, what they meant and said, none of it's met, what'd it say? If it's all no with y'all, which is just reinforcing y'all, why we have ZBA? Where's our wiggle room? You didn't put an "ups" on there.
If staff recommends denial, they're saying that they can't find that it meets all these. So that's where y'all need to come up with the findings, if you're wanting to approve it, so that you have, if it gets appealed to court or whatever, I mean, there's findings on the record for the base, you know, for your decision. So...
These are specifically written to make it where we can't do that, though. In other words, did the ordinance come out of council, or is this a state thing?
That's a zoning ordinance, it's state statute.
Is this called a paradox? Conundrum? Well, I don't, we don't have any wiggle room as a board here. We're going to just follow that strictly. I mean, that'd be decided in the, our department, sitting down with the... Y'all, y'all kind of, am I getting my point across? There's, where's our, where's the ZBA's wiggle room?
Well, usually there's not wiggle room. It's very, very clear in the state statute and the zoning ordinance and what the City Council has approved, and there has to be real reason of why this, this property or any other property would be different in an RS1 zoning district. And since the zoning district sets the setbacks in this case, why is this one different? Because a mistake was made, or is there something that gives it a hardship, a uniqueness, a real problematic situation, that there should be some relief for this property?
So, someone mentioned that the survey was off, or misinterpreted, which way was it? Was the survey wrong, or somebody read the survey wrong?
They read it wrong. They read it wrong. The way, it's my understanding, the way that the line was written, there was a picture of the 5-foot easement, 10-foot easement, and they were coming actually from the curb, instead of the picture she was showing us earlier.
So, this number two.
Even if they're all, yes, number two stops everything. It has to all be the same.
So the street's another five?
Chairman, could we have them give comment to the whole board, not just one member from the podium, please?
I'm sorry.
I don't know if you want to see it, but frustration just set in on me.
I understand.
What, there should be another line in there about people, the neighbors complaining, like if over 50% complained, or whatever. There should be some, something else than just the obvious. I mean, this is obvious when they're doing...
Gary.
I don't care. It's 4th of July, too, this is Independence Week. God bless America.
I unfortunately feel like our hands are tied.
Well, I, I, I'm just, maybe I'm, maybe I'm being too fogged up about all this and what I'm trying to describe. I mean, why have ZBA? It's all the same.
So they can get to see our pretty faces every day.
I'm sure they're enjoying that, you know. We ought to charge for admission.
Off our motion.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Gary, and technically, you guys may see something that staff does not. That is another reason.
Ma'am?
You may see something that staff does not see. Is another reason to have the board.
I do right now, I see it, but it's not on here.
And I think we also have a board, so that the applicant has the open ability to have everyone be heard, and it not just be one way or the other way. It's kind of like a jury of your peers, Gary.
Yeah, but, yeah, I know, following the rules of the jury and all that kind of stuff. I get it, I get it. Almost. Still a wiggle room. Let me open it up back, public comment, if that's okay. The applicants, would you, can you come up to the podium? You hear the dilemma.
Yes, sir.
And you also hear, I don't particularly care for the dilemma.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that.
And, so, I need your help. We need your help.
The only question that I have, and like I said, this is our first one, and we as the owners, we saw that it was, once we started pouring it, or not pouring it, setting up the foundations, everything, we stopped, we went to the city, he talked to Debbie, which I know is not an inspector, showed him the drawings, said, look, we're measuring from the curb, is this correct? We got, yeah, you're doing it right from, granted, they're not the inspector.
Can you stop right there? I'm sorry to interject. Can, is Debbie here?
I personally don't know Debbie.
No, she's not here.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Go ahead.
So, my brother went up there and said, with the drawings, said, this is where we're measuring from, the house next to us is 37 feet back, we're doing 27. Should we build it at 37, because it would look better? And that Debbie said, no, you need to do it based on the drawings, drawings say 25 feet. So we put it what we thought was 25 feet. We got green tag from the plumber, we got green tag from everybody up to the day we started framing. We started framing, and another inspector showed up, I don't know any of them, I wasn't there, said, stop what you're doing, you're in the wrong spot. We had three green tags up to that point.
From what I understand, somebody went down there and pulled them. They waited till after we poured the slab to run down there and say something to the city and say, we're in the wrong place. So, I mean, they were, we've been there because of the rain and all that.
It took for weeks.
It took almost a month for us to get the actual slab poured. And so, I mean, it kind of, they had plenty of time to come over there and knock on all my doors and say, hey, you're in the wrong place. Instead, they waited till we poured the slab and then it's, and we did question it. We just didn't ask the right person, I guess. So we questioned up until that point. Ours looks closer, are we sure we're doing it right?
That's not on the list.
We just didn't get any of that written in writing. We just had conversations with people at the city.
Yeah, let's see, let me... I talked to Brittany, I talked to Lord, Lord Davis, he was another realtor, I mean, because it kind of worried me that I was put in the wrong spot. I did.
We even, we talked to the builder next to us, and it was like, where did you get your information there? Didn't really have a good answer, because they're at, what, 37 feet?
Yeah.
At 38 feet. So the, so they're actually further back, or it's 34 feet is what they're, they're four feet further back than we are forward.
So what I'm hearing is you got advice from whoever at the city, and you followed their advice, and it didn't work out.
Yes, sir.
Would that be literal enforcement, would that be part of that third one? No?
No.
City's immune to making mistakes.
Yeah.
Well, I know they're all here saying all that, if, this is the first time I'd ever heard of somebody say a name, so I thought, well, let's see what...
I'm Charlie Kemp, Assistant Director of Development Services.
Hi, Charlie.
Hello. I want to make it clear that I have spoke with Debbie. On the plan review, it was specifically stated 25-foot front setback, that's what they permitted, okay? That's what the site plan showed. When someone brings up a survey or something to that effect, we always let them know, we don't know how much right-of-way they have. If he brought the survey, and it shows property pans, and he says, is this correct? It was correct. It's 25 foot from the property line, not the curb line. We just had a situation this morning that they have 23 foot of right-of-way. We can't tell them that. So we never say, measure off your curb line. We always say, measure off your property line. If they stake it, and they're showing the stakes, either it's surveyed, or the owner or builder takes that responsibility. We had once brought up doing form surveys, which is an additional cost to builders, and that was indicated that they did not want to go that route. And I understand that, I'm not saying that that's what we need to do, but that was one more step we were suggesting to do to keep from this happening. And a form survey is, an engineer actually goes out there from the stakes and makes sure that they don't have, that they have the 25-foot. We came up with the alternative of having the builder measure that from the stakes that the surveyor sets, and goes off of that.
I think, I appreciate that, and you're right, I understand what you're saying. I think what I've heard, though, is someone had told them it's okay to measure back from the back of the curb.
No, sir, that was not, that was stated.
No, 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 okay, okay.
I'm not putting it off on this.
Okay, I just had to correct that, okay.
I didn't have, I didn't know about that extra 5-footed easement. So, she said, yes, go put it, as the SKG says. I looked at that, and because there's no actual curb line, I didn't know where to start. I mean, I know about, I know about the stakes and all that, but I didn't know if that was part of that deed. You know, I didn't, I didn't know there was a second easement period. I mean, I've been doing this for 20-something years, haven't got to this point yet, I am green at it, I'm just starting off, doing my best, asking all the questions I can, when I can, and trying to, you know, make it bigger and better for me and my brother as well.
Understand.
So this was, this was my accident, I do take, you know...
Yes.
Responsibility for not having the actual knowledge that I needed.
Mm-hmm.
We're here to try to see what we can do.
I know.
I mean, that's all I can do.
And you see what we're running to with this list?
Yes, sir. And if it takes as long as it does to actually get it rezoned and all that, I can get my guys, we can get in there, it depends on if we can get the, get it repla, redone and made it look good to where it is, where it's supposed to be, everything's going to work out. I can get in there, get it knocked out, get it done pretty quick.
Mm-hmm.
So the thing is, just, it's that much money put into the slab, you know, it's just going to waste.
Well, what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing, though, if we follow the guidelines here, Yvonne's going to have to redesign and add on to the back. That would be my thoughts, and I'm not thinking for the board here, on a vote or motion. Is that motion still out there? You know what I mean? I mean, how big of a deal is that?
The redesign, I'm just waiting on her to...
We're looking at 5 feet by what? I don't believe you have to go...
How wide is the garage? 28? Like 22, 21 feet, I think.
They got $12 a square foot for the foundation?
So if you were to go, if he's making an example of pushing the 5 feet back, what is your setback in the back that you've already done?
The setback in the back?
That you've already done? Did you, did you use all of the setback?
No, I don't know.
Or do you have any room?
We have room, we got, I got...
Now they have 190...
It's not much, because there's a big drop-off. We have to do a bunch of dirt work if we go back.
Technically, they have 196 feet, because it's a very deep lot, but like they're saying, there is a big drop-off at the bottom part is, I mean, but they have a very large lot when you look at the site plan that they turned in.
It's very long, it's just not a lot of buildable space unless you...
Correct.
Build retaining walls and brought in a bunch of dirt.
So using, using 5 feet back, how wide, what do you think the total square foot is what you got now? Just leave the other side of the house that I'm assuming... So using, using five feet back, how wide, what do you think the total square foot is what you got? Just leave the other side of the house that I'm assuming she won't have to move. That's just an assumption. Put the floor plan back up there, please.
Right there.
Okay. All right. So let's see. You got the covered patio there. You know, and I know how many problems we can run into when we start moving one thing, it creates another, and I'm not going to try to get anything, but it looks like to me, real quick, that she only needs to move back the back of the house there and leave the, even leave the covered patio where it is. So let's take those numbers right there for now. What is the width of here to here? Can you read that? So we go five by eighteen, that's roughly a hundred, a hundred square feet?
That's basically what we talked about doing was just moving that back.
Yeah.
Bedroom. She's trying to redraw. The issue was the utility room. She would have to do something with that, and it's.
What's the saving grace on that is where that grave is right now?
They, she thinks it's doable. She just hasn't done it yet. But she's working on it. As soon as she gets done with her other projects.
My thing, my thing is, because if we move everything back, we have to be performing and everything. What I suggested was just kind of ended up three bedrooms instead of that four, eliminating that one bedroom, moving the washer, dryer, everything to that other side, posting up just that little bit of concrete between the tub and where we're going to put the utility, open up the living room a little bit more, but then again, there you go, losing money on three bedrooms and four bedrooms.
Okay, so the hall bath is what's getting you. You got the sewer, you can bring the water back in over top, right?
I can, yes. All my plumbing is down there, which actually if I had to, I'd make the mix under the concrete.
I think we're entered at some point, yeah.
And then the dryer or the washing machine and the drain for the water heater, I'd have to move, and then that little sink that's in there, which is all just a two-inch step.
You know, that hall bath, we got you.
I could only do the wall, though. I'd have to do it.
And that's what Yvonne was saying. Every time she was like suggesting this or that, it was like, oh, but then you run into this, and then you run into that. So she said she just couldn't spend the time on it before than me, and every scenario she came up with was, there's another. It looked easy because I was like, just shit.
Yeah, you will lose that, you will lose that bedroom, won't you?
Yeah, yes, sir.
What'd your plumber say about moving that? Okay, well, I know what, I know what, I know what they're going to say.
Yeah, he said the same thing everybody said, is everything's doable for a price.
Where's the sewer coming out?
It's coming through the front left, and then the water, the water mains on the right side.
Here?
Yes, sir.
Some feeding water to it. It's really not that, it's a sewer, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sewer lines. And then with the, just the curb and the garage, we'd have to do something with that step up there for the cars to park.
The tire stop?
Tire stop, yes. Sorry.
Is it shown on the plan? I don't see it. But anyway, doesn't matter. Okay. Yeah, the sewer's an issue, and since I'm not having the expertise in plumbing, I'd have to leave that up to a plumber to guide me on that one. The water, I see, can be done pretty easy, keep it a four-bedroom. Okay. Oops. All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You want to bring the motion in?
Unless anybody can say we can try something else, I'll ask for a motion. Close, I'm close, against open public comment, you'd close it again. Board commentary, any discussion on the board on what was just put in front of us? If they're not, I'll ask for a motion.
I unfortunately feel like our hands are tied. I understand the situation. I understand the hardship on it. We really have to match certain things to approve it, and there's not, that's just not there. And it's, it ties our hands, in my opinion.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Really? If he will. If he will make his motion again.
I know that wasn't a motion, right?
No, no, it technically wasn't.
I'm just making sure, you know, give me a break a moment.
It was board commentary.
Oh, no, I forget where I'm at. Where am I?
If we had the motion again.
There's good commentary, by the way. That might be less mad at me.
I'm never mad at you, Gary.
No, well. I don't see you. Any more commentary? I'm going to ask for a motion, so make a motion.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes.
Repeat the motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we, how do I want to say this? I really don't want to say it, but I'll make a motion that we go along with the staff's recommendation of a denial for this variance.
There's the motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not a happy aye, but an aye.
If I, let's see, that we don't, okay. Aye. So the motion passes six-zero. Am I leaving anything off for the public record on that? Okay. All right. West Texas Land Company, thank you for showing up. And you see the, you know, now they have an option. They can wait, or they can move it. And if y'all want to do what y'all want to do, but thanks for showing up. Appreciate it. Next item. Item number four, ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-two, seventy-six ninety-eight, South Country Club Road, single-member district number one, Tommy Hebert. Request for approval, variance section five oh one point eight, for a lot width of a hundred and branch and estate, R and E zoning in lieu of the required hundred and fifty feet. Hello?
Good afternoon, Ray Limeberry Planner. So this is at Country Club Road. It is in Tommy Hebert's district, Nazworthy as a neighborhood. It is zoned R and E. So they are requesting the lot itself. Let's see, this, this line right here is a hundred instead of the required hundred and fifty. So they are requesting a fifty-foot variance. We mailed out nine notices. We received one in favor, zero opposed. So in the findings, the lot is narrow for the zoning. The size of the lot was not the result of the applicant. It was already that way. Granting the variance would be consistent with the pattern of development in the area, and it will not adversely affect the area. I'm going to go back one. So if you notice, the one next to it is also smaller. Technically, the seventy-six seventy-eight was the same size, but they purchased that little bit from them or to make their lot bigger in the fifties, and then seventy-six thirty-eight is also smaller. So there are others in the area that will have the same problem if they go to plat. What brought this one in is they platted in order to build a house. So this is the plat, and you can see at the top there, it's a hundred feet. At the bottom, it's a hundred feet. So staff does find that all necessary criteria in granting the variance can be met, and it is, in fact, the minimum action that will make the use, the land use available. So staff is recommending approval. With that, is there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Let's go over this list. Checklist. So we can mark them.
Okay.
Let's see. Number, special circumstances. So you're saying special circumstances exist? That needs to be checked, yes?
Correct.
And the reason?
The lot was already that way. It was just not platted.
The lot was already where it was, not platted, and the lot next to it was exact same size. This is the one, I think, that we talked about.
Had a well.
Yes, this is the one that has a well.
Well, I just want to fill in this. The lot is, was it just, what'd you say again? I'm sorry, right. The lot was already there, existed?
Correct.
It is just not legally platted.
It was not legally platted from the get-go.
Not legally platted from, so they broke the law there.
No.
R and E.
Yes.
Whenever property is brought into the city, it automatically comes in as ranch and estate.
Okay. So that's a yes. There's overriding public interest concern. That's going to be N A? Not applicable.
There's no older buildings, so that's going to be N A.
Because if you say no, because down there it says if there are no, if there are any no, variance is denied.
Well, it's not an overriding public interest, so what they're saying is there's no older buildings on it. It's a big get lot.
There's an override public concern concerning, there's an override, so that's a yes.
There is.
Do you check yes? Is this a yes or no? Do you check yes? Is that what we do?
Do they get the staff reports?
Yeah, is that what we do?
So, so there's a staff report that's attached to this item.
Well, I know, but this is, this was so much today.
The staff report has all these, and it has staff's narrative for why it meets each of those.
Okay.
I mean, I understand the point you're making, but.
I'm just not sure how to answer that, the second one, that's all. But it's a yes. It'd be a yes. So literal enforcement strict requirements would result in the customer search, that's consistent with your fitness ordinance. Yes.
It just says one or more of the following circumstances would apply, so.
So our ordinance could probably.
I'm just trying to find the wiggle room in all this, because I'm real confused why we're even needing it.
What, sorry, I didn't hear what you said, that last part. You're talking to me. I'm deaf, remember?
Well, I'm dumb, so bear with me.
I'm not the dumb one, though.
So I'm guessing that since they're in approval, we're going to approve it, right? Why don't we get on through that one, and then we can discuss this.
Well, I'll go ahead.
I'm with you that I don't like this.
Yeah. I was just trying to get it clear in my head if we're going to have this in front of us every time to go through.
This seems to be designed to make sure we can't override it ever.
Yeah.
But I think it also, it's going to depend on the specific zoning. So like this one was ranch and estates, which has a different requirements preliminary, everything, unless it's just RS one or anything else.
So it'd be just approved.
So this technically, I mean, this is a layout of what it would be in general, but each of the zoning areas are going to be, have specific criteria, just like commercial would.
Then we're just checking off the jury list?
I'm just giving you my opinion.
Thank you, Ray.
I personally do not see any issue with it being the fifty foot instead of the hundred and fifty foot. It has a well. It's not like it's going to be.
It's a hundred foot instead of one fifty, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, fifty foot difference, but.
I'm going to close that part of the deal, and I'm going to open it up for public comment. Any public comment? There being none. Charlie, Austin, you don't want to have public comment. You're the only two left. I'm going to close public comment. All right, board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Third.
Thirded.
I think I'm supposed to say, okay, motion's made. Is there more discussion? You know, let's get it all right down the list. And then no discussion, let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Passes. Move on down the trail. All right, number five. A review of the zoning ordinance section two oh seven, the requirements for granting a variance. I think we've already done that, huh? Yeah, yeah. Interpretation.
Try and be brief. So for the very reason that we have the. I'm the deputy city attorney, Brandon Dyson. We struggled today with these cases, and so this is why I wanted to talk about this. I think it's obvious, but what is a variance? It has to be site-specific approval for a specific property to deviate from the city's zoning ordinance. So city council has established the zoning ordinance. So when we're talking about flexibility and all that stuff, if you want that, I mean, maybe we can bring an item back to recommended change, changing the ordinance, and go through the council process to do that, but the ordinance is what it is, and it allows for variances in the specific circumstances that y'all have been struggling with today. So just a couple distinctions. So variances can be granted for physical dimensional type requirements, like the setbacks and the floor area ratio, but not use variances. So I don't know an example of a use variance that might come up to y'all. I think staff would try and head that off before it got here, but essentially changing the zoning. So if someone was requesting a variance that would allow them to do something in a zoning district that isn't otherwise allowed, like commercial and residential, that's not allowed.
One that comes up regularly to staff is intermodal containers as storage buildings in RS one or RS two districts. So in our, we have a very specific thing in our ordinance that says they're not allowed in those districts and a few other districts. To allow them through a variance would be a use allowance, not just the container itself.
So, okay. So that being said, where does that fit under this checklist?
Well, it's coming. So, so the variance authority comes from a couple different places. We've got the Texas Local Government Code, which, that's the state statute.
We're a home rule state, okay.
We're a home rule, and it sets the minimum requirement. So I'm going to show you those in just a second, but we also have the zoning ordinance, which is two oh seven. It's those criteria that we've been looking at today. It says what, well, number one, it incorporates the state requirements, but then it also expands on those. So when we're talking about special circumstances, there's no definition for that stuff in the state statute. That's all interpreted either from case law or local ordinance. That's what those things are. So that's in two oh seven.
So the government code didn't address that, what you just said?
No, like things like hardship, not defined in the local government code. That's why we have the ordinance to say what those things are, and there's also cases that say what a hardship can or can't be.
So this checklist is coming off the San Angelo zoning ordinance? This has nothing to do with the local government code?
Well, it does, because the ordinance incorporates the state requirements.
So this was in the state?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we are a home.
So the hardship piece of that, I mean, clearly what we did to those people today is a hardship, but you're not going to view that that's sufficient, right?
Yeah, obviously, having to rebuild that. There is a financial hardship, yes, but that's not the way the law views the hardship. Hardship can't be self-imposed. I mean, he admitted here that he made a mistake. Yes, we all make mistakes, but that's the requirement. Also, we have a San Angelo Code of Ordinances that just creates the board, so the state statute requires us to have a ZBA. So I think earlier you were saying, well, why are we even here? Well, we have to be here.
I think I've read that different when I'm, over the years, summary reading that kind of stuff. It is a requirement, though, huh?
So general law cities, their city council can be their ZBA, but not for home rule.
Okay.
So that section will also do, have stuff like the quorum requirements, which is also in the state code, but it has more procedural things, not necessarily the variance stuff.
Right.
All right, so this is out of the state statute. Variance isn't contrary to the public interest, and due to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Again, hardship is not defined in the statute. And then, so that the spirit of the ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. Well, what the heck does that mean? What that means is the purpose of the ordinance. So in the very front of our ordinance, we have a purpose statement. So in the very front of our ordinance, we have a purpose statement. And in general, it's for public health, safety, and welfare. And also respecting private property rights. That's a factor in there. So if you're taking all those into account, and you can find that, you know, it's, uh, there is no public safety, health concern, we're respecting property rights, that condition could be met.
Okay, hold on one second. If you don't mind. Spirit of the ordinance. And there's a difference between law and justice. So how do you apply that justice part into the code? I mean, they're, you know, the lady holding justice is blind. I mean, there's law and justice. They're two separate. They're not the same, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I mean, I think you have to weigh the interests of the applicant, the person who, you know, is trying to get the variance against the interests of the city as a whole. Public health, safety, welfare.
I see.
So will granting that variance harm the public benefit? Maybe yes, maybe no.
So are we here, could I say we're here as a board to find the law and the justice?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's all kind of wrapped together.
Well, they're separated though.
And, well, okay. Tell me how you think it's separate.
Well, there, there's law, and then there's justice. This is the, this is the definition. But I, I have asked an attorney one time, I'm just curious. I said, I'm probably gonna ask you a stupid question, but you've heard me ask stupid questions before. Is there a difference between law and justice? I said, oh, yeah. But that's the lady, that's the two. That's, you're trying to balance law and justice. So 101, he told me, and attorney, he's an old man. He said, man, you're taking me back to 101. I'm a college professor, but there, is that what, is that what I'm talking to you?
Sure, I mean, I think there's things that are legally okay, but morally, maybe they're not.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah.
So it's kind of subjective then, right?
Sure it is.
Yeah.
And that's why we need criteria to make it consistent.
Well, the spirit of the ordinance, the spirit of an ordinance is, is a subjective statement.
Hey. It's not law, so I agree. That's why there are cases that are interpreting all that stuff.
I'm trying to find out why this board needs to be here, and I think I'm sitting on that, that third one right there. Will you agree?
Yeah, it's a struggle. But, but that's a legislative, that is from the statute. So that is not any, I mean, we're stuck with that part of it.
Okay. I, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not debating you here. I'm, I'm trying to gain knowledge.
Sure, yeah, no.
And I'm not trying to test your, it's like you said, that's 101. I gotta go back. And I said, well, I never was in 101, uh, the law school. So, but I did ask the question. Is there a difference between the law and the justice? And yeah, there is.
Yeah. I agree with that. Okay. So this is out of that same section, and I think we brought this up at our last meeting about financial and when we can consider costs. So this is that section. And, um, one thing to point out on this, so the very first one, the financial cost of compliance is greater than 50% of the appraised value of the structure. So we have some real estate expertise up here. And I mean, I think y'all could, you know, give an opinion of value. But the burden in these cases is really on the applicant. If the applicant is gonna make a case based on these factors, they should be providing cost estimates, their certified tax rolls, whatever it may be, to prove this stuff up. So, um, and then you see the other, not all those are related to cost, but those are the other factors you consider. Now, our ordinance says that, you know, you can't solely consider financial costs a hardship.
You're, the city ordinance.
Right.
What does the state say?
The state doesn't address that, but there are cases that interpret hardship and talk about costs, so.
I'm with you.
Brandon, do you have these? We just have the one for the, the variance for San Angelo zoning. Do you have these other on paper for us?
I mean, I can get them. So all the ordinance, that's on the city website. And then the state law, you can search these sections, and there's a free site.
Right, so do you have that, that you can send to us?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mostly that's in all that stuff you sent me after last meeting, right?
Correct.
You might just forward that all to them. I asked the same question after last meeting. I was like, tell me what the rules actually are. And he sent, I mean, I don't like the rules, but he sent, he sent the, the, what the, how the rules are written.
So, and if we do email them, that's fine. Just, um, we're gonna blind copy. All of you just don't have a discussion together outside the meeting. That's the only thing.
Oops.
Alright, so this is our, our zoning ordinance. And if, there needs to be some clarity in it. I mean, admittedly, it is kind of confusing because Gary, you were looking at, there's like three factors, and then there's the six factors. And on the three, it says you have to find that one or more of these apply. And then on the six, it says you have to find that all of them apply. Well, the six incorporate these anyways. So one way we may amend the ordinance is just having the six and making that a little less confusing. But this is what I was talking about, about how the state statute is the minimum. This kind of expands that and explains it. So special circumstances, that's site-specific size, shape, area, topography, surrounding conditions or location that generally do not apply to other property in the same zoning district. One thing you may struggle with on this is, okay, you can compare two different RS1 zoning districts across the city and find in one, there are some unique situations. But what if in that one, it's not unique? So like lake property, if there's some kind of topography on the lake, well, is it specific to, just to that lot we're talking about? Or is it the whole, uh, lake area?
Well, okay, Brandon, why can't that just be decided there at the office? Everybody's obvious. I mean, why, why does it need to come here?
Well. Because state says we have to have a ZBA. We have to bring that to y'all. But that's why we make the recommendations too.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
So.
But it's costing the, it's costing, you know, if y'all go approve it, it's still costing the applicant money to get here in time. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, so public interest, this, this just talks about what a public interest could be, but it says including but not limited to, so preserving the natural environment, promoting maintenance reuse of older urban or historic buildings, or helping eliminate a non-conforming use.
Public interest help eliminate non-conforming use, right.
So for instance, I guess.
Is that, is that the breed that to go by? You said there's more?
There could be more. These are just the ones that the ordinance lists.
Okay.
And then literal enforcement, enforcement of the zoning ordinance results in extraordinary circumstances. So one example of that is if they didn't get the variance, there's no allowable use if the zoning ordinance is enforced. So today on the case we had, without discussing that too much, if they didn't get the variance, well, they couldn't build on the lot. It's a ranch and estate lot. It has to meet certain requirements that it didn't meet, so it couldn't, they couldn't build a house there. I guess you could say they could still go camp on it or something, but that's not really a beneficial use that.
Run into that much? Is that what you're saying? Don't run into that third one much?
Uh, I mean.
I would say we run into that one more often than not, and we try to resolve those. Sometimes it's within an administrative adjustment of an administrative variance because of some setback. Or instead of being able to utilize the land and, and the proper zoning that we would allow or deny, and city staff have a mechanism to do that.
Alright, the ordinance also talks about the types of variances that are not allowed.
That says shall not.
Yeah. So that adversely affects land use patterns, material detriment to public welfare, not the minimum variance that will relieve proven hardships. On this one, if someone comes in asking, I want a 20-foot variance, but they could do their project with only a 10, I think you, you know, you can't just grant a 20-foot variance if there's no basis for doing that. Allow use not permitted in a zoning district where the property is located. That's a use variance. Relieve applicant of conditions caused by illegal subdivision of land. So I think this might happen.
That's kind of changing all the time.
From time to time. So there are certain requirements. If you're working on your land, they require you to plat. If instead of plating, you just give someone a deed and come up with your legal description, that may be a situation where you've illegally subdivided.
And y'all getting that from the state?
No, this is out of our, our local.
The cities, local, okay. The home rule, rule. The state has some thing that go by, but it's a minimum? And this has been added?
Yeah, these are trying to explain.
Yeah, well, I, I've understood that splitting off the acreage has changed over the years, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there is a plating exception.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Relieve applicant of conditions that are self-imposed. We kind of talked about that already. Be solely to make the property more profitable or reduce expense. So sometimes you hear the phrase like the highest and best use of property. In this context, no one's entitled to get a variance to get their property to be the highest and best, most profitable use. But, um, they do have to have beneficial use of the property. So they have to be able to do something with it other than just go sit on it. And I'll get into this in a little bit, but it kind of, it touches on a regulatory taking if they can't use the property beneficially, so. Modifies conditions imposed on a conditional use for plan development. So I think mostly ZBA cases happen before planning commission, but sometimes they may not. So if you get a planning commission case that they approve a conditional use, and as part of that, they impose conditions. Those conditions can't be varied by this board.
I see. Even if a mistake is made and it's already down, they don't, they're variance.
Yeah, it's approved by planning, and it comes in for that specific conditional variance.
I mean, planning commission may, may be able to rehear it if there's a case made or a mistake made.
When the one with some kind of guy was transposing the minutes or something. But anyway, go ahead.
And then it would not just affect the subject property, but would have a general effect that would merit a zoning change or amendment. So example of this, um, the open structure overlay. Y'all had, I think, 12 variances coming up. And I think Terry suggested, why don't we take a look at the overlay? And we did that, and I think we cut that down to maybe two.
Yeah, I think we cut it down all the way to one. So that, that actually helped.
Yeah, so that was an example of, well, instead of granting a variance, maybe we need to look at the ordinance, and it's a zoning ordinance amendment that would help that. Okay, and then y'all have seen these. This is the sixth criteria that you have to find in order to grant the variance. You also see one of the earlier sections that we reviewed that have the three, the special conditions. It also says that you'll have in your minute record the specific nature of those circumstances which justify the variance. So these two sections require you to make findings, and that's important if it gets appealed to, to court. And so why does any of this matter? Variance has helped prevent regulatory taking. So we've all heard of condemnation. If the government comes and condemns your land, they have to give you just compensation for that. But that's a physical taking of the property. If they're regulating it in such a way that you don't have beneficial use of the property, you can only just go and sit on it, then that's a taking as well. So the ordinance allows for variances, so we can try and prevent those situations.
Well, it allows with a lot of caveats, and that allows.
I'm sorry?
A lot of caveats, and that allows.
There are a lot of caveats, absolutely.
I'm trying to find the one that we need as a board.
Yeah.
I think I found it. But that's alright. I'll have to bring, uh, oh god, F. Lee Bailey here. But I probably don't even know who he is. Do you? Let's get, I gotta get a little more modern. Who's Johnny Cochran? Um, who am I gonna? Who am I, who am I gonna need to bring here? I mean, you know, uh, who's, who's the hot lawyer now? That's not Percy Foreman now, I'm going way back. But, uh, uh, anyway, I'm. Oh, you know, you gotta have a little humor and laugh. What the hell? Go ahead, Brandon. You're doing, you're doing a good job.
Probably disagree on the, the criteria, but they are there to try and make decisions consistent if you're applying the criteria. It's not meant to be flexible. It's not meant to help someone out. It's, uh, meant to meet all those requirements that we talked about, the public health, safety, welfare purpose while respecting property rights. But the biggest, why it matters for you guys probably is that you're a quasi-judicial board. So appeals don't go to city council like they do with other boards. They go to district or county court. And if that happens, the court requires that we would send them a record that they could review. They don't like, it's not like they're the trier of fact. Y'all have made all the factual findings, and they're just reviewing those findings when they're applying it to state code and our local ordinance. So that's why it's important to have those findings. Otherwise, uh, we're, I mean, there's gonna be depositions, discovery. Y'all are all gonna be part of that. And the city will represent you in that and provide counsel, but it's still gonna be an impact in time and, you know, having y'all be a part of that case.
Well, we wanna do the right thing, but we also wanna do the justice too, you know?
Yep.
So you had in there spirit of the, spirit of the ordinance? I mean, come on. Spirit in the sky, there's a song there. So what does that mean? I mean, that's subjective. That's our wiggle room. That's, that's, that's the only thing we have, is spirit of the ordinance and justice.
So in the courts, if you've made those findings, they do give ZBA's deference. They won't substitute their judgment for the judgment of the zoning board so long as you're meeting the criteria and making those findings, so. But if you don't, then they have to. I mean, they have to make their own opinion if they have nothing to go on.
So when you, when you define in spirit is, uh, of the ordinance?
And that's just one component of it. You keep coming back to that, but there, I mean, there's.
Well, I know, but that's about the only one I can hang my hat on. For when they're coming in, staff is.
But you have to meet all of them, that's the, the struggle.
Well, yeah, I know. When staff is recommending, uh, not approval, Well, yeah, I know, when staff is recommending not approval, I mean, our hands are pretty well tied unless we find some wiggle room. Y'all agree? Where's the wiggle room spirit and justice?
I think we see. We still on?
Yeah.
I think that by case-by-case basis, obviously, we have to read it, look at it, hear it, interpret it. And I think all six of us can interpret some of those differently. So that's why it's a case-by-case basis on how it gets done.
Okay. I'll go there.
So last one, I mean, these variances do run with the land. You can put conditions on variances. You can do it. I don't like doing ones that are time-limited because someone has to track that, and, I mean, how does the title company know and all that kind of stuff? So it runs with the land, you really don't get a second chance. So it's important to try and get it right the first time. That's all I have, unless y'all have any other questions.
Very good. You've opened my eyes up to more things, thank you. Does the board have any questions for Brandon on anything? It's law.
Man, I would just make a philosophical comment. What bugs me about this, I think we're in a situation where there's too many rules been written.
Right.
And so I will always come down on the side of fairness to the citizen. In other words, I want to fight for their interest every time, and I told you this last month, I think you guys appear to be doing the same thing to an extent, but the question becomes, did somebody write to any rules at some point? In other words, this process is designed where we really can't override you if you say, deny, we can't do anything about it, right? That's what you told me last month. And so that, to this point, that kind of means we're just wasting our time and checking a box for the city to say to the state, we've got a ZBA, but if we're all going to give two or three hours of an afternoon once a month, we'd like to know that at some point we can override it. If we think it's in the best interest of the city and the citizens to do it, then we should be able to at least say we think we should override it for no particular reason other than it seems fair.
So what you're talking about is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that's something that can happen, but it has to go through planning commission and ultimately city council. I mean, I think y'all can have some recommendations in that, we could bring an item to y'all on that, and you can consider it, but I understand what you're saying, but you got to change the ordinance.
No, no. I get that, but the whole thing was kind of set up where you can't change it, you know? Even if we were to override it, it just bounces to the next committee, right? And then they won't do it. So, you know, we're just kind of spinning our wheels.
Well, I think the idea is, in most cities, you don't meet as a ZBA very often. You should have ordinances that work for your community, and if we're meeting often, particularly about a specific thing, open structure, open carports, then that means the ordinance needs to change. And so maybe over the next few months, we need to start thinking, well, what do we meet a lot about, and how do we solve those things?
So I don't know anything about this, but do we have an unusual number of ordinances related to other cities?
We have the least ordinances that I know of in this.
Okay, so we've got a lean structure in your view.
Very lean.
Okay, that's good. Sorry.
Thank you. That's the problem with the set of rules, though. Every time you have a set of rules like that, somebody, some contractor, some homeowner, somebody's going to say, for whatever reason, I need three more feet this way. Well, go to the zoning board, they'll give you three more feet. Well, the rule says you can't have that three more feet, and I don't particularly care what you want to do with that three more feet, the rules say you can't have them. And just because he thinks it's nice and it's going to make his house look good, it isn't necessarily spirit.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I can understand the argument behind it, but it just doesn't make it spirit.
Well, that's subjective, right?
Yeah, yeah, pure subjectiveness. And your subjectiveness doesn't override the zoning law.
Unless we get the vote.
Yeah, unless.
Get the vote. Under the guise of the spirit or the justice.
And somehow or other, we have to justify it. We either justify it to ourselves, or we wait until they file a lawsuit against us, and we go to all these subpoena sessions and justify why we voted the way we voted.
Well, I'm not going to let me making a mistake on my vote because I violated somebody's, sends it to district court sway of how I'm going to vote, I just need to know, you know what I mean?
I understand, I agree.
The spirit and of codes, and like I said, they're a separate thing, and it was in there called justice. And they're two different things. And law is law, and justice is justice, they're similar, but they're separate. So anyway, I'll stop there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that done? You done?
Yep.
Nope donuts? Nope. Man, what are you going to do with your paycheck we get from this?
Yeah.
You know what? It's been a long time since I had this much brain damage, naturally. Item number six, division report, that was it, right? You just did it? No. Item number six, hello, Mr. Planning Director.
Hello.
You're mighty.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So staff's been working really hard on learning the ordinance, and really, that's what this board needs, is for us to come back and say, this is the ordinance, and here's where conflicts are. Because I think there is some areas in our zoning ordinance that are problematic. I think the open structure overlay is one that's a challenging thing of why does this neighborhood over that neighborhood? There are some other things, even in, say, either one of the cases today, those were different setbacks or distances. Do they still make sense for when it was created? Now, the challenging part of that is, those things are not a short process to change, they need true evaluation, they need real educated input from our entire community, not just, here's what we think. Because we want to make sure that our ordinances reflect our community and are working for our community, because otherwise, again, I do get the sense, just like maybe Commissioner Laster said, you know, we're just kind of spinning our wheels here, what's the real point? And so we want to know that, and we want that feedback from you guys too. So if you have suggestions, ideas, that, hey, come teach us this at one of the meetings, we're happy to do that, and talk about how it's in there, why it's in there, doesn't mean we all agree with it, but at least we can talk about it and make some decisions with it.
Democratic process, right?
So we're happy to do that going forward. That's all I have today.
That question just occurred to me as you was talking, on the 25-foot building setback that we just went through, is there a percentage of wiggle room allowed if they're encroached by 1% over? Is it an unwritten policy of side setbacks and front setbacks? Is there a policy procedure that we might not be aware of?
So within the code, there is a 10%.
10%?
Now, I think in the past, city staff has given that 10% as an automatic. I'm not sure that if we really looked at the ordinance and said, all right, we're going to judge you guys by these rules, are we also following the same rules? What makes them different? What makes them unique that we should allow 24 feet instead of 25 if it's a brand-new structure? If it's an existing structure, that may have some uniqueness there, because it's hard to move an existing structure.
Something that's already been poured like we saw today.
Yeah. Now, at least that one had the right plan, everything that they submitted, but I do think there is, there's, we have as a city, looked at administrative adjustments, which are called administrative variances.
Kind of the hard fast benchmarks, 10%?
Right. But if we are expecting our zoning board of adjustment board members to say, all right, here's the line, why would we not expect our staff to do the same? Now, there may be some specific circumstances that it makes sense, but.
Isn't that an administrative adjustment? You wouldn't have to come here?
Correct, there's still a cost and all that evaluation that goes into it, and all because someone requests one, that does not mean they get one.
Gotcha.
So in the case of Silver Spur, thinking about that 10%, could you just offer them two and a half feet for their reconfiguration?
Well, they could apply for it, but I don't believe that based on our.
It would seem like a nice gesture, I feel badly about what we did to them, and I get why we did it.
They're going to live the bedroom, do they know?
It's probably not.
Were they aware of that?
Were they aware of?
The 10% adjustment that's kind of in the ether of the law, the land type stuff?
I don't think the administrative, I'm just looking at, I don't think it's for every scenario. I think it, I mean, like, one is floor area.
Yeah.
I've heard it sounds like, I never asked a question about front setbacks, I've heard that it's allowed on side setbacks. That's kind of what's considered before we have to go through the ZBA stuff. I forgot what it was, I never seen it in writing.
Oh, yeah, there is.
I just figured it's policy somewhere. Is it in the code?
Yeah, there's an administrative adjustment provision in the code, yeah.
Yes.
Would that have applied here? Well, we know that answer.
I think the rule, I think the rules for deciding if it's worthy of that are the same as that were heard today.
You think?
I believe so, yes.
I believe so.
Remember, I think you had, Tony said she had already gone and talked and given options and shown, and as he basically put it, he would just take his chances with the board.
Yeah, well, I guess, well, it's over, forget it.
At the same time, I understand, I feel bad.
How many on the board knew that existed? That 10%? We didn't ask the question. Yeah. That's just one of those things, you know, it's just not, it needs to be brought up more often that we did the 10% adjustment analysis, it does not apply to this case, and so on and so forth. Right?
We can consider looking at that, yes.
Yeah. See, mine don't have too much brain damage to do.
I think one of us would need to consider that, either in the staff as they prepare the case, or in our case, as we review what you have found, somebody needs to look at that.
Yep.
Well, I would like to say, when staff is approached and somebody says, hey, I need five-foot of variance, the first thing staff does is say, okay, does that meet the 10%? No, that can't be administrative, you need to apply for this instead. So staff does look to see if somebody comes up and says, I need this much, we say, is that within the 10%? No, then you need this type of application.
This was already poured.
Correct. But again, he had come in saying he needed five feet, so staff would have said that doesn't fall under the 10%.
Yeah, this one was kind of unique.
Well, yeah, but it should have been read into the record.
But that 10% might really help them with reconfiguring, in other words, that's all their, their really only option is to go rebuild it, but that two and a half feet might allow them to get all that figured out with a laundry.
You got to keep that plumbing issue they have, it could help.
I mean, we do say to them, you know, like, when he would have said, hey, I poured it and it's five feet, we would have said, well, 10% is administratively available, and...
So he's already aware that that was administratively available?
In most cases, that is what staff says, is, well, 10% is administrative.
But this was not?
But this was.
Was he aware of that?
He was, multiple staff members had worked with him coming in, and he was asking for more time and faster, and we said, well, this is not administratively available at that, at five foot. We did not specifically say, you can have two and a half feet.
Part of it is philosophical. If there's a 25-foot setback requirement, why would any of it be administrative? Now, in this case, we're going to say, well, because he poured a concrete pad in the wrong place, it should be. I'm not sure that that makes a lot of sense, but that's something we would have to evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, but it might have helped him, it might have helped him.
But remember, we're not, and I know this sounds, it sounds contradiction.
That's why y'all have me here to try to help them, but.
We are not here, we're here to have them follow the ordinance.
Right. So if that 10% rule's in there, it should be in the presentation, we've tried this, it did not work.
We can do that on our presentations.
But that 10% is still available to him if he reworks.
That he can apply for the 10%, it is not a guarantee that you get 10%. We want to make that clear.
We're not taking anything away from him, Gary.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we're not taking anything away from him, from the applicant from our 25-foot, you know, he still has that 10% if, a lot of ifs, to use it, for wiggle room, laundry, water connection, sewer.
As a first-time builder, he might not understand, that's why I was asking, did the city specifically say?
He is a first-time builder in the city of San Angelo, he's a longtime builder in Midland Odessa.
I'm trying to combine the two in the whole thing, hey, give us 20, or we'd like to use a 10% rule, can't be done?
I don't think it's an optional, it's not a multiple-choice question.
Can't be under one application?
They could apply for both if they chose, yes.
Okay, so it's in all in the wording and how they apply it?
Yes.
Okay.
If city staff sees it's.
When I'm sitting there trying to help him redesign his plan, I didn't have that 10% in my head, of course.
Right, which is never needed.
And I'm losing that middle bath, that was going to be the stall, so he's going to have to bring it down to that two and a half feet, might have helped.
I understand.
I think the main thing, and they're talking about communication.
Yeah, but my point is, is that that 10% is not the solution to this problem in this case. It might be in some cases.
Because he didn't ask for it.
Had nothing to do with whether he asked or not.
Okay. So you're saying that that doesn't need to be implied into the presentation each case of something like this?
I don't think so, but we're happy to do that for you guys.
Okay. Well, if something's allowed.
It's always implied that it's not, yeah.
If he puts that in the presentation, it's going to be implied it's always denied. I mean, he wouldn't bring, if that solves the issue, then it doesn't come to y'all unless the applicant appeals that decision.
I didn't say solve, I said help.
Okay, but the administrative adjustment is denied if it comes to you, so what help is it going to give?
When I'm trying to figure the hardship on the money side, I went the full five feet.
Okay, but you still have the criteria that you have to meet for what they're requesting, the.
No, no, but you can't put the two in one thing.
So we denied it, all of us here, but offering the 10% after the fact is a different solution, in other words, we said, okay, here's your two, you can go try and change the rules, which will take you forever, or you can redraw your plans, but that two and a half percent or two and a half feet comes really important for redrawing the plans. I just think that'd be a nice time to say, hey, have you thought about this?
Right.
I understand, it was an up or down vote on the first question. So I get your point, but it'd been a nice gesture on the second part, I think it solved their problem.
That falls under the spirit, and then it goes into justice even.
But the criteria is not different depending on the amount of leeway you're giving, I guess. The two and a half feet or five feet, you have to meet the criteria anyways, because he's already denied the administrative adjustment if it's getting to y'all. So the two and a half feet, or whatever it would be, is out the window.
And on this particular one, obviously, he didn't apply for it because it was already poured.
Right.
So I think what they're saying in the future is that if it's, I think that everyone's concerned on communication is that it's just openly acknowledged that this might be a possibility, if you're within that footage. I know he's looking at it to where it's like, he could have pushed the front porch back, or maybe a beam or something.
What's the redesign, $200 square foot?
But, I mean, obviously, it'd already been poured, and that's what we were dealing with.
Just so y'all know, we've got another meeting that's coming along here, but just to reiterate what Brandon said, regardless of whether you give the percentage or not, they still have to meet the criteria. So staff cannot give that administrative grant unless they meet those criteria and he is certain they meet it. If he's not certain, and he wants to bring it to this board to decide, then you still have to meet that. So you can't give the percentage unless you meet those criteria.
Why have the percentage?
That is a state.
No, why have the percentage? Give me, well, no, Rick, I'm serious. Give me an example where that would apply then?
If there is a hardship of some nature on the property, which is very unique to that property, that property has some unique feature about it that makes it unique to all the other ones, then staff can say, okay, clearly, this is, whatever this hardship is, allows it to be different from the others, and because it meets that different criteria, then they can give that exception. Is that, you would have to, there's a million different things, I guess you could come up with, it could be an exception, to be quite honest with you, those are hard to find.
Yeah, sure.
They're very hard to find, so they're not common.
Gotcha.
So that 10% is an honest saving grace, I mean, in this situation, our final decision on it probably would have been our staff recommendation. If he'd have been within that 10%, our staff recommendation was denial, so we probably would have denied the administrative variance. Now, it can still come to you after that, but that's where it would have ended for us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rick. All right. Uh, let's see, that was a division report, back to that one. Oh, God, I got to read this. Item number seven, public comment issues, concerns, none on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments, the dice and begin by stating their name and address, single member, district number, please leave all remarks to less than three minutes. Okay, there are no public comment. Next meeting agenda, next meeting, zoning board adjustments scheduled to begin at 1:30 p.m. on Monday, August 5, 2024, in C. Hall, Mezzanine Ring Room, East Mezzanine Ring Room. Item number, what was that, nine adjournment? Did I hear motion to adjourn? I oppose. Just kidding, camera in the sky.